All right. It is 7:01 on Monday, December 6th, 2021. I'll call the regular city council meeting of the city. Call me to order, roll call.
Niemitz.
Here.
Wrestler.
Who?
Hold camp.
Here. Here. Here.
Martins.
I'm here.
Come back to him.
Riddle.
Here.
Garmer. Garmer. Cory.
Here.
Go back to hold camp.
Hold camp.
Here.
He's waving his hand.
Here. I'm here.
Hey Steve, if you're there, can you unmute?
I'm... I am unmuted.
Okay. All right. We'll ask everybody to please stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Thank you. At this time, I'll have Mr. John Conrad come up and...
I present John Conrad with a certificate of appreciation to the Columbia Chamber of Commerce. This is for generous donation of 27 Christmas length post declarations, which contributes to the economic on top. Columbia's authority for now is to the behalf of Columbia's residents, businesses, and visitors. We thank you for your support.
All right. At this time, we'll have the public input.
I just want to remind everybody, public may address the city council under the terms of ordinance 3587. Only those individuals who have indicated desire to speak by signing in will be recognized. The time limit is three minutes per speaker. And if you have any other questions, please refer to the document titled Addressing the Council During Public Input for Specific Rules Governing This Public Input.
All right. And... Mr. Brim. Do you want to go ahead and start the... Okay. Is anyone else going to address the council on anything other than the Bluff Ridge Estates? Okay. All right. So we're going to bump up the... Move around the agenda. So we're going to do the discussion of preliminary subdivision approval for Bluff Ridge Estates.
Sorry you caught me off guard there.
That's right. Sorry about that.
Okay. Thank you. Tonight, we're here to discuss one thing, and that is, does the preliminary plat submitted for Bluff Ridge Estates meet the minimum requirements of the subdivision code? The facts of the case are, the property was legally annexed into the city in Zone R3, one family dwelling district in 1995. And the applicant does have the right to develop the subject property under the R3 zoning standards and applicable minimum standards of the subdivision code. At this point, the major point of discussion has revolved around the portion of Ruck Road that runs north and south between Ruck Parkway and Hoffman Estates Drive, which happens to be the boundary between Bluff Ridge Estates and Brellinger subdivision. It is worth noting that the preliminary plat does account for improvements of Ruck Road north of Ruck Parkway. So in coordination with the applicant during the process of developing the preliminary plat, staff was asked, well, what are the requirements for Ruck Road going to be? In order to make that determination, we did quite a bit of research. Because when we sat down with them, our initial, our gut impression was, well, obviously it's not needed anymore because Ruck Parkway gets to the same spot. But we thought, well, we better go ahead and check, do some research and make sure that that's the correct determination. So we did that. Did an extensive amount of research. We looked at past approvals, agreements that were executed between the city and various properties in the vicinity. In these agreements, there were several developments going on at the same, in roughly the same time period as had been previously indicated. In particular, you had Brellinger, you had Columbia Golf Course, Briar and Briar Lake specifically. They were all kind of ongoing. And as I mentioned, we need to answer a few questions before we could really give the proper guidance. And that was, you know, with Ruck Parkway providing access directly to Bluff Ridge, is this section of Ruck Road even needed or wanted by the city? If it is wanted and needed by the city, what is, should the functional classification be? And what would the design requirements be? And also, if the Brellinger development was not required to improve this section of Ruck Road as was required by the subdivision code, what should Bluff Ridge development be required? And is it, should they be required? And could we even require them to do the entire, with the Ruck Road? So these were questions we kind of needed to answer for ourselves before we knew how to give the proper guidance to the applicant that they were seeking. We did this. And the determinations that we came upon, and when I say staff, I am referring to myself. I am referring to city engineer Chris Smith, city administrator Doug Brim, building official Justin Osterhage, and city attorney Terry Brooker. We've all reviewed these things and come to the same conclusion. And the determinations were based on the following. The subdivision code required the original Brellinger subdivision and the Brellinger first edition to dedicate right-ofway and improve this section of Ruck Road that's in question. However, only the right-ofway dedication occurred. This section is also addressed in the 1995 annexation agreement with the owners of what is now, what is being proposed to be Bluff Ridge, the owners at that time. And that annexation agreement, which was still in effect at the time the Brellinger plats were approved, stated that the city would require the developers of the Pfeffer property, which is the Brellinger property, to improve their half of Ruck Road. An approved subdivision variance would have been required for both the original Brellinger subdivision and the Brellinger first edition to alleviate the developer's responsibility to improve half of Ruck Road. However, there's no record of a subdivision variance being granted for this. There's one requested in conjunction with the first edition, but there's no record that there was ever one approved. But there were two approved with the original Brellinger subdivision that had nothing to do with this aspect of it. So there were variances, other variances approved at that time. But even if a variance was approved, that would have not satisfied the city's responsibility to require the Pfeffer developer, the Pfeffer property developer, to improve that side of the road. The only thing that could have done both would have been to deem that Ruck Parkway is a replacement of Ruck, this section of Ruck Road. That's the only thing that could have satisfied both. So that is what the determinations that we made and the advice that was given. That's what everything was based on. To be clear though, let me, those agreements that we researched, those terms are no longer applicable. They have since expired. Okay? So the controlling regulation at this point is the subdivision code. And the city is required by state statute to approve any subdivision that satisfies the minimum requirements of the subdivision code. Our subdivision code does not authorize or provide for off-site improvements to be done outside of the subdivision. So if council wants this section of Ruck Road to be improved, the most we can require from Bluff Ridge is to provide half a street of improvements. The city would be responsible for improving the other half of right-ofway because nobody paid for that and improved it at that time. And no money was contributed to that. The preliminary plat now has been reviewed by city staff and the plan commission, found by both, not only to comply with the requirements of the subdivision code, but have also recommended for approval. I do need to mention that city attorney Brooker has advised that both state statute and the subdivision code does require preliminary plats to be approved or disapproved within 30 days of the next meeting following the plan commission action. So therefore, city council must take action on this and either approve it or disapprove it no later than the next meeting, which is scheduled by December, or for December 20th. Okay? With this in mind, council would have the following options. If council agrees with the staff determinations regarding Ruck Road, the plan commission and staff findings of consistency with the subdivision code, and you also agree with the staff and plan commission recommendations of approval, then you should approve the preliminary plat. If you disagree with any of all of those, then obviously you should disapprove the preliminary plat. But I want to give you one other option for consideration. If you're not sure and you would like additional time to consider, that is fine. The plat still complies because Outlet A, Outlets are set aside for future development. Okay? They are not improved and final plated until they are ready to be developed. And then they are approved with their own set of improvement plans and a final plat. So therefore, you could still approve the preliminary plat for a couple of reasons. First off, we can't require this, that section of Ruck Road to be approved at this time anyway because Outlet A is not being developed. It's held for future development. And the other thing is that the vacation is labeled as proposed. Nothing actually happens with the vacation if it's approved with the preliminary plat. You do not vacate it if you approve the plat. You're simply saying you're allowing it to be proposed. And then you can determine, that will give you the time to figure out exactly what you want to do with this section of Ruck Road and which could be required at the time either Outlet A is developed or there's an annexation agreement that you can then impose a requirement for the improvements on or what have you. So in other words, you know, it's not being improved with this subdivision regardless. This, we can't require that at this time based on everything that we've discovered and the advice of the city attorney. So what we are, would also like to keep you to keep in mind too, that there were a couple of, there are a few comments that we've heard about things that may have not been addressed. For example, or that aren't addressed with the subdivision code, such as, well, can we require construction traffic to utilize this section of Ruck Road? And you can place reasonable conditions such as that that aren't actually dedication requirements, et cetera. You can do that with the preliminary plat. So if you want to do something like that, or even if you'd like to, just to satisfy everybody that, look, nothing's going to happen, we're not, you know, Outlet A's not going to be kind of surreptitiously developed or anything like that. You could even require a note to be put on the plat or something specifying that, hey, Outlet A cannot be improved, building permits could not be issued on Outlet A without an approved set of improvement plans and final plat. I mean, that's the requirement anyway. But if you just wanted to provide some ease of mind for some folks that, you know, a note like that could do it too. So anyway, those are your options. You know the staff and planning commission recommendations. And I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Any aldermen have any questions for Mr. Dunneke?
I got one.
Yes, sir. Alderman Wrestler.
Scott, about the variances, if any.
No, none have been requested, none are required for what's being proposed.
Heard in the past about the street angle, the street elevations. Are those going to be at their proposed, they in compliance?
Yep.
So the steepness of the streets are not a problem?
That's not a variance situation. The code specifically says council can approve streets up to that where there's adverse topography. Does not require a variance.
And the drainage is not...
You just have to approve it with showing that.
And the drainage, as far as being specified in about the drainage, that all gets determined so that at the end of the development, there has to be proper retention, detention?
Yes. It's reviewed at a cursory level right now to verify that the big picture requirements are met. But will be reviewed again during the improvement plan phase to make sure that the design satisfies all the calculations and meets the needs based on those calculations and the code. And in fact, they're actually proposing on the, with the plat to go above and beyond what the subdivision code requires in that they're, they volunteered to make some improvements that are consistent with the drainage study that was done for the watershed, such as the rock riffles, and they've made sure that the, the bridge design would be designed to at least handle the 100-year storm.
And the Outlet A, is that what you called it?
Outlet A, yes.
The one at the farther, far southern corner?
At the farthest southwest corner, that would be correct.
At the elbow?
Yes.
So that Outlet is not included in this plat? There was talk...
Only as an Outlet, correct.
Talked one time, I haven't a second answer, it's come out of there. Right.
When, when the ancillary, the adjacent development was proposed, correct.
So if there would be a development at that time on that Outlet there, can a road improvement be required for that development? Or if once we approve this preliminary plat, are we prohibited from going ahead and making any kind of road requirement improvement from any development on that, on that stretch?
No. The city, the city has the right-ofway. And we can make any improvements we want on our own right-of-way as the city at any time.
Of the developer for this subdivision?
We can only require to the developer what the codes allow us to provide, to require. And that would be up to a half-street. Now, if a developer internal streets within a subdivision, that serves the subdivision solely. They can be required for all those. But streets that are on the border of a subdivision or form the boundary, we can only require up to the half-street unless we use a different mechanism such as a, in an annexation agreement.
And that half-street that only goes down to the elbow, doesn't do the whole corner? Doesn't go all the way over to Rick Road?
Yeah. If you were to require it, yes, but you could not require it now regardless.
But it should do everything.
So once this preliminary plat's approved, then that if...
Hold it. Let me make sure I understood this because I heard some, it would not go down and go back east and west. We, the east-west segment does not even touch this subdivision in any form or fashion. We cannot require them to improve that.
Part of the Brellinger development. You're saying that was, had a dedication that was...
That was dedicated by Brellinger.
And it's expired.
The, the agreements wherein those were agreed, were the certain, I guess, that laid out the plans for how Ruck Road would be developed, yes, are spelled out in those agreements. And who would be responsible for what?
Right. And in that memo that they cited in their little packet here, it included your inner office, not inner office, your analysis, which, in which you identified the letters between the developer, the city at that time, which also had markings on the maps identifying, if I'm correct in reading this, identified the Rick Road Parkway as the new Rick Road.
Yes, sir.
That was the implication from what I got from reading your information and seeing the attached maps, was that back in 2002 or 19, whatever, that it appeared that, that the development was going to go ahead and replace the elbow? That was the intention?
That, that was our interpretation, correct.
And from the drawings on the map at that time, that's the way it looked?
Yes.
That, and from just common sense and that, it seemed like, why would you go down on that elbow if you can go right through the subdivision to the other side? Why would you connect that road to the other side if you didn't want to go ahead and have a use for that?
Although I will say there are some, some, I guess, language in the, one or more of the agreements that does indicate that some of the dedications would be for future use, should they, should they be needed. So not all of them were required to be improved. There were some of them that said, we're going to require the dedication should they be needed to serve development in the future.
I can see as a, as a, as a alternative, that they could go and get those dedications. But the fact that you put that road in, marked it up as Rick Road Parkway and noted it as an alternative, it seemed like the implication back then was that it was going to be the primary thorough for her to get through to the other side.
That is...
Have that come out on the other side of that subdivision? If it wasn't the intention, he's going to expand that throughout the road. It's not as curvy. It's, I mean, that's just what it looked like to me from, from reading that.
That, staff would agree.
And the whole rebuttal in this argument is that you don't want the subdivision to have to have the traffic for the new subdivisions that go through there as they work their way down towards Black Horse Ranch.
But which subdivision doesn't have that?
I know. But I mean, so I'm correctly understanding what we're doing now?
That's correct. And the intent is that as development occurs, subdivisions be interconnected so exactly that can continue to occur.
Okay. And my reading of their, their packet here, they put your, they put your memo in there and they addressed certain parts of it, but they didn't address that part. I mean, I just found that interesting. That didn't, that would, to me would be something that I thought maybe they could address on that.
Perhaps they could.
Thanks.
Any other, from aldermen, any other questions, comments for Mr. Dunneke? Thank you, sir. All right. At this time, we'll have the public input. If you're on the, if you signed in, you will be asked to come to the podium and state your name. No? Okay. Dennis? Mr. Brim? You want to read the, and then...
I'm Dennis Brim. Just want to clarify a couple, a few things here. I'm on the clock here, so I'll probably do it quick. There's past city documents very clearly stating, and with city council approval, that Rick Parkway was to serve Brellinger and the golf course property only. It's very clear in the past documents and approvals with the city. That was our agreement with the city. And then, Rick, existed Rick Road. They want us to dedicate 32 and a half feet of street, right-of-way, for a future improvement of Rick Road for the east of us property, which that would be their access, be their access for their development. Not Rick Parkway. Now, there is not one document that I ever seen with the city of Columbia labeling Rick Parkway as a collector's street. It was another way to feed the golf course property and Brellinger only. It's very clear that the, the city attorney's letters back then and what we had to do when we got our developments approved. And it's very clear that the property to the east of us, whenever it's developed, they would take our 32 and a half footer right-of-way we dedicated and match that and improve Rick Road Collector Street. So it's even stated at, on the plats, that Rick Road is a collector's street. I don't see how this, all your codes, and if the city has ever abandoned right-of-way for a collector's street. Not, I can't imagine vacating a right-of-way for a collector's street. So this, what is proposed is not what, following the subdivision code, it's not following the master plan. And it's not following all the past city council approvals of this matter. And on, in the plats, in the preliminary plats on page four, I think it is, or three, they're calling out Bluff Ridge Road as a collector's street. And they're calling out Rick Parkway as a collector's street. Like you said, Rick Parkway was never labeled as a collector's street. I'm done, so. I can't believe, I can't, somebody talks forever and then I get, I'm talking three minutes, so. So be it.
Thank you, sir. We have Linda Lloyd. Mr. Skoggins? Do you want to step up? Do you want to speak?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
One, one thing that hasn't been discussed here by, by Mr. Dunneke is that there are, there were, that was marked not only on the Brellinger subdivision or plat that that, that dedication was for future development for this, that, that's number one. Number two, it was put on the, the Brellinger first edition plat. Number three, it is specifically set out in the master plan that Ruck Road is going to be improved. Now, the argument here is that it was never intended to be improved. That is, you passed the master plan by a stat, by a resolution or an ordinance, and the master plan says that. The master plan exists at this time, and you are directed or recommended highly to improve Rick Road. Now, why does everybody think that, and why does Mr. Dunneke not see that? Why in his history does he not see that that was the plan? At least he doesn't mention it. Why doesn't he not mention that the letters we sent him from the city attorney at the time, Tom Adams, who specifically refers in his letters to Ruck Road being developed by those who, for their subdivisions being developed at that time? That was what was resolved. The, the early, the 2002, this thing wasn't really even decided at then. It wasn't decided until 2004. So if you, I can't imagine why a city employee would want to ignore those things and not bring it to your attention when we've given it to him. There's letters from Tom Adams saying this is the way it was supposed to be. I'm saying this, that, the, the other thing that I want to say is that we've got people from the Brellinger subdivision here, and the way I look at it, there's been about 120 lots that have been improved or about to be improved. These people all thought, all looked at the preliminary plats at the time, they all thought there was going to be another access. Many of them might not have bought there if they thought that, that other subdivisions were going to run right through their subdivision because it wasn't presented that way. The, so we, we've got 120 people who've spent, I'm going to use a conservative figure, perhaps $500,000 lot or improvement, a home. That's on the low end for Brellinger. But if that, if you do use that figure, that's $60 million that these good people have invested in your city and you're about to throw it out the window, or your, your, your staff is suggesting that it be thrown out the window, that $60 million, Mr. Dunneke, don't smile at me like that.
Address, Mr. Skaggins, address the council.
Is, is going to be thrown out the window because Mr. Dunneke is recommending otherwise, contrary to what Tom Adams said happened at the time. Read Tom Adams's letter. I'm, I'm sorry, I got emotional about it, but this is important to Brellinger and this is important to the city of Columbia.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Goody? If you'd state your name and your address, please, when you step to the podium?
My name's Vince Goody, I live in 1584 Rick Road in Columbia. I own about 60 acres just north of this proposed development. Been against it all along, but I think the main thing I was against it, I kind of smelled the rat from the beginning. When I attended a meeting here a couple of months ago, a lot of questions were asked of these people, and the answers were false. I just didn't have the information in front of me to argue with them. But my main concern at that time was, was there any water diversion going to be on my property? She said no. Someone even mentioned my name in general. She said, no, no water diverted on the property. I didn't have the information in front of me to argue it. Well, on the way home, it was presented to me this. I'm not an engineer, but I do see that, I think you guys are calling it Oak Ridge View, Oak Ridge Drive. Everything, the storm sewer that's going down, Oak Ridge Drive, all the way down there, dumps off right on my property. Right on a piece of property that I use to access on a regular, I went across it 15 times today. The cover there is going to go, unless they've changed something since the last meeting, but when the little map that I just pulled up tonight, on page, I don't know, probably 144, shows it dumps off on my property. I mean, can imagine a big storm sewer coming down and just dumping, can that happen? So I guess I just don't believe anything that's going on. Once you're jaded and once you don't, you don't believe anything. And as far as the vacating of Rick Road, I see only, I don't see anyone benefiting it except these developers. For people like me who live down there, no, to me it's just hardship that's going to be on the city of Columbia and possible legal issues down the road. And we're going to be left picking up the garbage from what's left behind. So as far as vacating the road, these people are much more educated and explaining why it shouldn't be done legally, but on a stand part of me being a landowner, it should not be. And as far as, I can't believe it even made it to this point. I'm not a, as she says, she's a licensed engineer with the state of Illinois, I'm not. I've got a high school diploma, that's it. And I found flaws in this. So I think if somebody would dig deeper or maybe bring it, you're going to find a lot of flaws, a lot of things. And, I don't know, I'm just saying, I'm just a, I'm just a little old farmer and if I can find flaws, I think if the people that Columbia hired, they dig deeper, they'd find them too. And I can't believe it even made it to this point. So while Dennis, you can have 30 more of my seconds.
Mr. Griniger? If you'd state your name and your address, please, sir?
My name's Jeff Griniger, I live in Amber Tree Court, which is the corner, the southwest corner of property, pretty much comes right adjacent to mine. The first thing that I want to do is address the water drainage issue. Like Mr. Goody said, there's 20 houses on a 12% grade running down concrete that goes right off into his property, goes down the creek and comes into my backyard. I've never seen it up into my yard yet, but I'm sure when you have 20 houses that immediately go in with no retention pond, there's no way to slow it down, there's no way to stop it from going in instantly. That water is going to run right down that creek and it's going to back up. We already have issues at Quarry Road and Gudern. We have more issues that are going in with the other subdivision, Walnut Ridge, I believe it is, or Walnut at the corner of Rook Road and Quarry Road. There's already, you know, one of the retention ponds is already filled up with mud and they had to dig it out already. All that goes into Palmer Creek. We're going to have more issues. The other thing is, is that the three roads that they have going up the hill are going to go up and be developed in more property. We don't know, another what, 50, 60, 80 houses, whatever above that. Once it gets there, it goes right down into that creek again. We're going to have issues again. So the big thing that I have is there's no retention on that side of the whole property that they want to develop. There's 20 houses, there's no retention on whatsoever. Goes right off into Mr. Goody's property, right into the creek and right out down. So there is going to be problems. I think they were supposed to, and they're supposed to address what's going to happen with all the properties up there when you start looking for road issues and you start looking for access and you start looking for utilities and start looking for water runoff. I believe you're supposed to look at the whole property, the larger portion above that, to see what's going to happen in the, in the long run. And I don't see any of that being addressed in these drawings for this plat. I'll give them the rest of my...
Thank you. Diane, is it Naras, Naras? Would you like to speak? No? Okay. Ms. Cindy Holman? Oh, okay. Mr. Brocklin? Would you like to speak?
No, I just agree with Dennis and Mark.
Okay. Mr. Rice? Are you speaking, Mr. Rice? Are you?
No, sorry, I'm just...
Wayne Waller? Mr. Waller, would you like to speak? Okay, if you would state your name and your address?
I'm Wayne Waller. I'm an engineer that worked with Dennis on this project. I'm from Mascoud, Illinois. There were just a couple of things that I, I, when I looked over this, that I noticed that, like when we did the, the Brellinger development, we had to come up with a comprehensive plan for the whole acreage. And I didn't see that being addressed for, for these, this property. And maybe that would kind of, you know, give us more of a traffic overview for the whole property. But I think they also need to have a, a traffic study done if they're going to funnel all this traffic through this, on this street. They need to address future development, that if you abandon this road, if it's all going to be then, then funneled down through this Rick Parkway, including all the way to the north. In which I, I didn't see that being addressed in the, in these documents. I know that in, in your codes that there is a, where they have to have avoidance of congestion of traffic. And I guess that's, that's probably the biggest things that I've found while I was reviewing this.
Okay.
That's all I had.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Pozniak? Just state your name and address, please.
My name is Bob Poznick. I live at 532 Feffer Drive in Brellinger. My issue is more of having to do with what's been told at the November meeting, which I could not attend, and what's been said in the past. Mr. Dunneke mentioned that there are minor number of differences between an R3 and an R2. Well, the number may be minor, but each one by itself is significant. 16,000 for an R3, 25,000 for an R2, if I'm correct. That's, that is a 56% increase. Setbacks, front, 25% difference. Side setbacks, 33% setback. What I found interesting when I saw the show map was that the minimum house size for an R3 is 1,200 square feet. And I mentioned that because the gentleman from one of the applicants mentioned that he wants to build some nice homes that are 500,000 plus. Well, let me tell you about the lot sizes. Three or less than four tenths of an acre. 40 are less than half an acre. So right there you have over two-thirds, 68% of their lots are on, on land that is less than half an acre. 11 more lots are on lots that are less than six tenths of an acre. Seven are on lots that are three quarters an acre or less. So right there you've got 97 lots that are less than, excuse me, .75. One lot between three quarters and one and one over one. I don't know about the rest of the people in this room, but if I had an opportunity to build a house set to half a million dollars, I would not put it on one of these small lots. They are way too small, in my opinion. So I don't know how he's going to do that, but frankly, I don't think there's anybody in this room that would dispute that. I wouldn't, there'd be no yard left. I mean, you would have to build a three-story house. So that is one thing. The lot sizes are measured between, one, okay, I, I have to divert because I see that my time is limited here. One more thing I just wanted to bring up quickly was the November planning commission meeting. Was stated before that, that it was approved and that we have 30 days, et cetera, et cetera. Well, nothing that Dennis and Mark had brought and any other people that are going to speak tonight was available to the planning commission. So to me, that was a farce. That information should have been provided to them ahead of time. And the reason why I say that is because the minute somebody said, the chairman said, "I will entertain a motion," it took 35 seconds until somebody made a recommendation, a proposal. And that included two proddings by the chairman to get somebody to say something, to propose something. 35 seconds, it wasn't just like an automatic, "I propose, we accept it." You know, that's just that. And the other thing I just want to mention is the fact that he's, I, I, what, what concerns me is I hear that there's not documents being found for this and that. And it's like, if I'm on that side of the table, I want to see those documents to prove, to disprove what Mark and Dennis and everybody else has been saying. I want to see the documents, and that's why I'm going to ask the attorney, "Do I send a FOIA request to you for information?"
FOIA request on the city clerk?
On the city clerk?
Yes, sir.
To the city clerk?
Mr. Hitzman?
I'll be doing a FOIA request for this R3 designation because I just really...
Okay. You can send it to Mr. Hitzman.
I will, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Whalen, Jack Whalen? That's all right.
Stew's a hat, but it keeps the lights off my glasses.
You're, you're, you're okay?
I'm Jack Whalen. I'm at 1205 Huffman Estates Lane at the, I'm at the elbow, down there in that southwest corner. First of all, would any of yous vote to close all the streets in and out of Columbia except for one, where everybody goes in and out of one street? Would any of yous vote for that? I don't think so. You've closed Rick Road, you already got the easement, you got everything, you got a man that's supposed to develop it, you got a road, an exit out of back there. If you close it, anybody that builds north of Rick Boulevard, they're going to have to come up there, make a stop, make a square right turn to get out. If there's another subdivision gets built back there, they're going to have to do the same thing. How much are you going to allow them to get by with? Anyway, it hasn't been brought up, but it should have been. It's just not the 40 acres for water runoff and it's not just the Goody to, yeah, Springs. There's 2,200 acres flows in to Rick Road there, or Rick, Palmer Creek. You can check it out at Belville at the Soil and Water Conservation. Because I had a, the dam built just north of my house, between my house and this subdivision. Joe Goody owned it and between me and him, we put in a waterway and put in a dam. And they told us that there was 2,200 acres fit in there and we had to build a dam and everything to certain specifications. At that point, the railroad put a 30, a 26-inch covert underneath the railroad tracks to drain the water that went down that borderline between me and that property and to the lake. I don't know what size they're going to do in there, I don't know what they plan on doing there. I haven't seen nothing on the, any of the maps. I don't know what they're going to do with the dam or none of that because it's never been addressed. If you look on the, if you Google that 40 acres and you look up the top, you'll see some big gullies coming down through there. And if you notice, they start washing at the very top. They don't come down halfway where, and then start washing the ditch. They start top and they do that every year. The farmer's got to close them every year before he can get his equipment in the ground. There is one hell of a lot of water comes down that hill, plus all of the other. And, only got a couple of minutes. You're putting in all these bridges, you're updating all these bridges. All you're doing is speeding up the water. It's going down like a raging river, it's washing every place it goes.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dewildee?
Doug Dewildee, I'm at 615 Amber Tree Court. Just a couple of things. Mr. Russell, you kind of mentioned earlier, one of the things I'm curious about is, we keep talking about the improvements of Ruck Road and I don't know actually, Scott, you might be able to help me, the east and west portion, which we're not talking about, I don't know what actually happens to that because we, because a lot of discussion's been in the north-south, which borders the subdivision, not the east-west. I really don't know what happens to that. I'm concerned because that goes through my backyard. So, but what, the point you made is if anybody is driving down Ruck Road and they're going to Bluff Ridge, I don't care if you improve that road, nobody in their right mind is going to make a 90-degree turn to the right, go down and make a 90-degree turn to the left, go up, make another 90-degree turn to the right, when you can continue straight. You, they're not going to do it, nobody would do that, right? So to your point, they're going to funnel through that way. So the thing with improving that road is, and I remember you saying in one of the meetings, that I don't even think you can improve that portion of the road up to code because something with the 90-degree turns and the amount of property, I don't even think that could be improved, is what I thought you said, I can't remember. So I don't even know how you improve that road if you can't put it up to code. You can't improve a street and then put a bunch of traffic on it if it doesn't meet code, right? Because that's another problem. The watershed is, and I want to bring this back up because I feel like we keep kicking the can down the road without making decisions to help improve this or think about this. So Walnut Ridge, right now there's 30 to 40 homes going in, I think. That's about what it is. Brellinger, I think we just added another probably 20 to 30 homes in the current 30. Bluff Ridge is going to be 60 lots because it's not 96, you just picked up a bunch of lots somehow. And then between ICS and, and Briar Lakes, that's eventually all going to be houses. We know it is. The streets are all going there. So, we're talking three hundred homes that over the next five to ten years are all feeding that same creek that's got twenty-two hundred acres of runoff. I'm concerned that we were passing things before having a solution to the current water issue. And, and that really scares me when we have Quarry Road flooding out, we have Gudern flooding out, and people can't get out of the safety and the ability to get out when there's a big rain. I still think that really needs to be considered is what can we do? Retention ponds that they're, that you guys are going to do are obviously going to help, but it's not the solution when we already have a problem and we're adding more into it. So, just wanted to bring that up for consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew.
I cannot make out this last name, but, uh, if you reside at five forty-nine La Croix Way? Okay. So, Josh Bezinski?
Nothing is now already been said.
Okay. Bob Bauer? Mr. Bauer, would you like to speak? If you'd just state your, uh, name and your address, please, sir.
My name is Bob Bauer, and I live in the Brellinger subdivision. I didn't know what to expect when I walked in the door, and what I actually saw, I think, is kind of democracy in action. We elect you, we talk, you listen. The potential, I'm afraid, for the worst of democracy, too. We talk and you don't listen, or you make a bad decision, and then we live with it. I guess that's all I have to say, is I'm afraid that if there's a bad decision, we're all going to live with it.
Thank you. Uh, Peter Leslie Huddle? You state your name and your address, please, sir.
Pete Hoytall. I live at fifteen fifty-two Stoll Court with my wife, Leslie. Couple of things just to touch on real quick. Uh, the water, the water issue is something we can't, we can't sleep on this. I know we're not, what, I know it's been talked about, but you've got the elevation that's on that hill. It's twice, that elevation is twice as long as Cherry Street. You're going to have a lot of water rushing down that hill. And on top of the problems that we're just talking about with the flooding and everything going on, and we talk about this is going to be able to handle a hundred-year flood. Well, how many hundred-year floods have we had in the last ten years? I mean, Gudern floods, how often? We have family that lives in Gudern. God forbid, if there's an emergency, how many emergencies have to happen for that to mean something to the city, to all of us? And I don't mean that to the city count, I mean, the city, all of us. One emergency, does, is that enough for the matter? It floods now, just like we're talking about. All this land's going to be developed. It's going to add to it. Then we're going to add the, the homes up on the hillside. It's going to add to it. It's going to add to it. There's a big problem here with the water. So, we don't have to figure it out now, just like others have said. We've got to figure it out now before we add to it. We need to follow the master plan. We need to improve Ruck Road. How, what that looks like, I have no idea. I don't know what that looks like. But Ruck Parkway is not meant to handle the increase in, in traffic. It's projected over double, double the traffic. It's not meant for that. That subdivision wasn't meant for that. Like, Mr., like Mark and Dennis are talking about, Parkway was not meant to serve another subdivision up the hill. It was meant to serve the golf course and Brellinger. It's not meant, it's not meant to serve a whole nother subdivision, plus whatever happens in the future. Earlier in the summer, we were presented with additional development up on the hillside. Now, that's off the table. Well, are we not to think that that's not going to happen in the future? This is step one. We're going to develop this, and then boom, next, whether it's them developing it or they sell it to another developer. It's all going to get developed. It's going, there's going to be future development. And what's that going to be? That's going to be R3 as well? So, now we have more R3 homes because now we've established R3, we're going with the R3 zoning that's, that's approved, right? Although I think that should be challenged. Based on the neighborhoods that's around in the, in the area, that should be challenged. Based on others that have stated the size of the lots and everything like that. It's not, it's not up to par with the surrounding neighborhoods. There's a lot of big issues here. And we can compound these issues very quickly. We just need to think about this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marcia Mallor? Yeah.
Leslie Hoytall at, uh, fifteen fifty-two Stoll Court. We're lot six on your plot, if anyone wants to take a look at it. Mark, I completely understand what you were saying about, it looks like that road's completed that way. But I think that, I think that Mr. Brand had a really great example of explaining why so many people have purchased there. What we were told and what the plan was, was that that wasn't going to be a thorough road to further development back behind us. One, it's being planned for right now possibly, but although we, like my husband mentioned, there's a, it was a larger proposal for entire lots behind that. All of that traffic will go directly past my house. We purchased that home not told that that would go directly past my house. But on a bigger scale, so, this is just me, right? You're going to, no one's going to vote based on the Hoytall household. I think from a bigger perspective is thinking about what I was taught growing up. We all live in Columbia. We're all supporting each other. We want to look out after each other. And if there's so many different things that we're all questioning here that maybe aren't really lining up right, it doesn't feel great in your gut, right? Maybe there's something about the water issue. Maybe it's about the road that wasn't being planned, that's not being completed correctly. Maybe it's about the traffic. I think there's quite a few different things that, uh, everyone can kind of agree on that maybe, um, doesn't sit right, doesn't look right on the paper, and more so once it's actually applied to everyone's actual lives, isn't correct. Then I would think that certainly there's always time to take time to make sure things are done correctly. But once it's done incorrectly, it's permanent, and it's going to affect quite a few different people in many different communities. You have a lot of different Brellinger, um, people, you know, residents here right now. But unfortunately, this is going to affect a lot of other citizens in Columbia who aren't aware of it. And too bad they're not here to be able to stand up for themselves and ask for this to be able to be reviewed a little bit longer to be able to make sure that this is done correctly. We all know that it's going to be developed back there. We didn't purchase thinking that we'd see that big, beautiful hill every morning. But I certainly can say that, um, we, we do see the flooding coming off of it. We see the big, uh, you know, and you see how quickly the right, the rain comes. And it's going to happen. So, if I could ask of anything, it's just more that we all really consider how many people this is going to affect within the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Marcia Mallor?
My name is Marcia Mallor. I'm the, uh, professional engineer that's been, uh, referred to this evening. I work, uh, with TWM, and I'm also the engineer representing this development. I'll address a few comments that were made. The preliminary plat is exactly what it says. It's preliminary at this stage. It is a general idea of what lot layouts there will be, if there needs to be, you know, stormwater detention. We've shown a couple of locations, but the final design, the final sizing, the final routing, none of that has been determined at this stage. That does not get done until we move to the next step, which is improvement plans. And at that step, it will have to comply not only with the City of Columbia stormwater management and requirements, but it also has to follow Illinois Drainage Law, which means we cannot discharge any more water during any storm event than what the downstream condition is currently seeing. So, if additional storm sewers need to be provided so that we don't adversely impact Mr. Goody Vincent, then we would have to provide those, and we would have to provide calculations. So, that will all be done, uh, if this is approved by the board. That's the next step. With regards to the roadway, if you look at Ruck Parkway as it exists right now, from the end of Ruck Road to where it ties in at a ninety to the existing Ruck Road, you will notice there are no driveways off of the roadway. That's called an unloaded road. That is a sign of a collector road. It has the right-of-way width. It has limited number of access points. If we were to design the existing Ruck Road with the two nineties as a collector road, you would need to remove the three houses on the southeast corner of Brellinger to get the required radiuses and the required tangent points between two reverse curves. So, when you come into a roadway, you have a large curve, you have what's called the tangent piece, and then you have another curve taking it back out. To meet that, you would have to remove possibly three of those houses in the corner. So, that's not going to be where you can provide a collector road. So, it looks like, I wasn't here when it was all done, but it looks like Ruck Parkway was set up to be a collector road and to create a stop, uh, stop sign intersection at Ruck Parkway and Ruck Road. And that is what we are proposing as well. With regards to the property to the east, that piece is not annexed into the city. That piece is not under consideration tonight. Uh, but at the city's request, they are having us put in a collector road of Bluff Ridge to accommodate any potential development in that area, which would then be designed for that additional traffic if it ever becomes a subdivision. But that would need to go through your annexation process. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, Thomas Reed?
Hi, my name is, uh, Thomas Reed. I'm, uh, with, uh, Bluff Ridge Estates. Uh, just wanted to point out a couple of things really quick here. Um, you know, we, we have been working with, uh, Scott and the engineers for over two years now. I know that, uh, uh, you know, people have come up here prior to, to me and, and asked for, you know, us to keep continuing to review this. It's been almost two years to the date since we've started to work with the city. You know, we've made numerous concessions, uh, you know, average lot sizes, I think, will lie around, uh, twenty-two thousand square feet. The minimum for R3 is sixteen thousand square feet, so, um, obviously, average it out to exceeding that by, you know, four, five thousand square feet, uh, per lot size. Minimum brick requirements, we're also exceeding that, uh, in the subdivision. It actually is, uh, going to be full-height brick on three sides, you know, which we don't have to do. But again, you know, we're, we're, we're trying to, uh, meet the, or exceed the requirements of what's required. As far as detention goes and, and, uh, and the riffles and things like that, we're obviously over-designing this to, uh, to accommodate, uh, to help, better help the situation that's downstream. We also share concerns that there is a downstream issue. We also own property that's upstream of a, a downstream issue here. So, we're all in this together. Uh, there is a downstream issue here, needs to be addressed. Is it relevant to the approval of the property, uh, or approval of the subdivision? Technically not. We are not dumping any more water into the stream. We legally cannot dump more water into the stream than what we are currently dumping in today. So, it's not relative to the approval of this subdivision, but it is a relative talking point when it comes to future, uh, or long-term flooding that's, that's happening up and down, uh, uh, Quarry Road. Uh, and the also thing with the, uh, uh, with the, um, vacating of Ruck Road, uh, I think somebody was asking for some legal documents or proof of what took place. In the annexation agreement, in our annexation agreement for the Bluff Ridge property, it clearly noted that Ruck Road was given a fifty-foot, uh, right-of-way, not sixty, which would be a collector street. So, our annexation agreement said fifty feet. So, I can't think that seven years later, when Brellinger's being talked about, that they would come into an agreement with the city that would completely violate the annexation agreement for the forty acres that's already currently zoned, and that's under. I, I don't think that could have legally happened. Maybe it did, and it was overlooked, but it was clearly noted in the original annexation agreement that fifty feet for Ruck Road would be sufficient. With that, I, I just, uh, appreciate the time today, and, uh, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the council have any questions or comments? Pardon me? Did you sign up? What is your name?
Uh, Mark Lloyd.
Okay. State your address, please, sir.
Two Ogo Ridgeway.
Okay.
In Brellinger. Um, I'm also a licensed engineer. Not affiliated with this particular project, but I do a lot of work in Illinois counties, um, improvements to county office buildings and such, and used to the design and engineering aspect, how we all go through things. I moved to Brellinger two years ago. Barely, new, new neighbor. We all look at homes. I looked at over a hundred and forty-four homes in St. Louis and decided to move to Columbia, not St. Louis. Found this subdivision. It fed our needs. We all work hard for money, finances. We put them into our homes. I haven't had a chance to look at a lot of the documents. Uh, my first question would be is why are we trying to push this? You know, um, he's made some comments about you can do this, and we can do this, and some excuses to kind of just move this through, a preliminary stage. I do preliminaries all the time, investment-grade audits. Let's do this right. Why do, what, something doesn't sound right to me. We're trying to push something through here. That's my personal opinion. We have a lot of people here that are concerned about what's going to happen to their properties. I'm looking at a master plan. The master plan hasn't been updated for several years. I think we've talked about that enough. I think it should be updated. I have a copy of, one page of it, and it says right here, "The subdivider will apply in writing for such variance or exception upon filing of the preliminary plat." So, are there any variances? I heard that, I heard that there might be, and that they would be, um, uh, applied, they would be applied during, uh, an improvement plan, and blah, blah, blah.
Negative. No.
That's good to know. That's black and white. Uh, I still, I, I still highly recommend that we should, we should update the master plan. It hasn't been updated.
That's, that's being, we are doing that as, as we speak.
Great. Um, let me say, uh, I would just encourage you, the documents I've read, a number of exhibits, especially Exhibit G. I think it's pretty clear what, um, what Mr. Brand agreed to do, and that the Parkway, you know, I, I, I'm, I'm totally not against development. I'm an engineer myself, developer. Let's make this right. On the very front page of the, of the master plan, it says, um, "Growth is planned on the front page to occur in and around communities in a way that complements and enhances their character. Development in designated growth areas should be compatible in size, scale, architecture with existing development." With that, I invested in this property, and I speak in extremes. Why are we trying to build an apartment complex in a subdivision? And that's what we're talking about here. Why not put complementary homes up on the hill so it complements what we all invested in this, in this area? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone from the council have any questions or comments? Okay, Mr. Russell?
I want to thank y'all for bringing up, you've got a lot of points. Y'all had a lot of points that some things I've not heard before. I do plan on following up with a lot of what you got talked about there. I do have questions. I'll talk to you later about, I would like clarification on some things and that. But I thought y'all had concerns. One thing that I can, um, speak to that you had talked about was the R3 classification. Things were done thirty and forty years ago we can't fix. So, we're not going to challenge them in court. We got sued like that before and lost. But we're trying to minimize some of the stuff, and if that was put into place R3, then if we're not able to go ahead and say, "Hey, we'd like R2". I like R2. I think that would all be great. I think, but you cannot, you can't do that when it's already been zoned R3. You get sued over that, and we don't want to have that happen again. The, the stormwater thing, you, you all, very few maybe know about that, but we didn't even have stormwater management till here, till nineteen ninety-four. When it actually started coming into place, everything that was built before that was built and you just lived with it. So, now we're trying to go ahead and adapt to stormwater runoff, and also heavier rains, which seem to be coming, that I don't have in my memory and that. But, um, we don't want to add to the problem. We're dealing with what the engineer over there said that, as, as I've known it for the last thirty years and that, they're supposed to be telling us that when they develop those hilly sites, that the engineers are supposed to provide for water retention and detention, not to let any more water come off there to rate faster than what it is now. You don't believe that, or you wouldn't be here. I have my suspicions about it, but I can't prove it. How do you prove that? They got a drawing that they're standing behind. They're going to... They're gonna put in ditches and, and, and curves and, and basins and that, they're supposed to go and do this. We have that happening in all those new subdivisions and that, and we don't know, there's no way you can, can guess on that. And the state has dictated what she was talking about, what you can do, what that's supposed to be. We're bound by what they have in place to what they're saying that these drawings and these, um, mathematics are gonna go ahead and be right. So part of this is, is not anything that we disagree with. We just can't fix all of it, and we can't put a moratorium on something if somebody follows the rules, because you get sued for that too. And so I, as far as myself, and I'd have listened on what y'all, you brought up some good points, that things I wasn't aware of. I'll investigate that. And I think y'all deserve an answer to some of the questions, because I don't want to go forward if there is a flaw in a design, the water management, but part of what they're saying is hard to go ahead and say, we can't address the water management until we get to the next phase, and they're bound that if you had water runoff, when they were done, it can be no greater than the engineering specs before they started. So they, they come up with mathematics at the end, and even though they got a mountain of water coming down there, they're telling us that it's not any greater. How do you disprove that? Right now, there'd be people suing because they've lost their yard because of heavy water runoff as the road to their bank. They're, they would be suing if they could prove that, and they can't. And I've been outlooked at them. Had very good friends I've had, seen that happen to and that, I can't do nothing about it. It's not our thing. The person upstream, they're saying add it to some water, or maybe it came up through the quarry on the other side. That water basin you're talking about, 2,200 acres and that, that is well off, up onto, past the quarry and up the hill and stuff like that, all runs down through there and that. So we're aware of what you're talking about, but, um, some of the stuff we're not able to address, but you do have good questions that have developed and raised, uh, things that I would like to have clearer. And, um, I just didn't, I, I don't want you people going away thinking you've been ignored, you haven't been listened to, at least by me, and I, I've listened to what you have. I have my internal information and our staff that tells us one thing, but if we don't have input from you to go ahead and say, well, maybe what we have isn't considering this part of it and that part of it. And so for that, you know, I would say thank you for giving me that, that information, and I could not go ahead and vote yes or no on that without having that additional information. I know he said a 30-day window to go ahead and take an action on that, but, you know, I like to go ahead and have those, uh, those points that were brought up, and I would wish that, you know, we could go ahead and get some of their points addressed as to what they are, if there are things we can do now, things we can't do anything about, uh, things we can fix at a future date, things we can't. One thing that I'm concerned about is, uh, the road going forward, that by giving approval to a preliminary plat, we lose some sort of recourse to ever having to do anything with the elbow. And what she had said was a, was a great point about the elbow there. It, it can't improve, in my opinion, from what she said, you can't fix that to set a standard. You can't have an elbow and an elbow like that. It's gonna have to be a different type of curvature, you know, a different land, different area to go ahead and make something like that happen. But like I said, there's, there's lots of parts to consider that you've raised and brought up and, and you've even rebutted some of it and that, but anyway, I just wanted you to know that, at least from my part, you weren't not, uh, ignored. I do listen to what you have to say, and I do want to follow up with some of the things you talked about. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from the council? Yes, Alderman Neimetz?
I have many, but we have time to, I think, seek those answers out. And I've met with, I've met and I've gone through paperwork and I've gone back to original drawings that I had of the, of the subdivision too. So there's a lot of questions that I still, that still need to be answered for me. I'd also like to know, um, the, you know, not only the, not only the right-of-way, the 32 and a half feet, but the, there's also the MOPAC, the MOPAC right-of-way there that's referred to on one of the documents. And again, we just got so many documents within the past few days, and there's not been adequate time to sit down and analyze all of it. So, I mean, I have to do that. I have, I have not done an issue up here yet where I haven't done that, and I don't intend to. So, um, that has to be looked at. I don't understand where it's, it lists on one of the drawings that I saw, and I don't know who provided it, but no vacation has been recorded with regard to, I know it's not on that property, but it's south of there. And I, I would like, like to know, I mean, we're all about future and looking into the future. I don't understand, uh, that, and I will have to have that clarified by somebody, because if there's a stem there, if there's a piece of old railroad right-of-way there that is , uh, south of that development, I don't want it to run into lot number, I don't, didn't record on here which one it is, and there's too many, too many pages to pull it up now. But it comes right into the south end of one of the lots in the development and, uh, you know, again, this Explore Columbia Plan and the Greenway Plan, that was, that was something that was a dream for me a long time ago, and if there's anything here that we need to look at for the future, I want to be sure that we don't, we don't lose the opportunity for it. So it's roads, but it's also, it's also alternate transportation, it's pedestrian and bicycle too. So there's just an awful lot. I know, Scott, you said we had the 30 days from the PC approval, but, um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm in no way prepared tonight to, there's too much information to be analyzed and evaluated for me. I, I don't, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but that's.
Just to clarify, Mary Ellen, the intention was not to approve tonight?
No.
Tonight was just a review and discussion?
I'm not so sure they all knew that, though. And, and I, and I, I think if there's a way we can make sure that they know there are legalities that we are bound by with the city, again, like Alderman Wrestler said, you know, we've had, we've had a lot of issues up here, and, and there's so many different opinions and so many ways of looking at things, and we're not going to get ourselves into legal issues. I don't want to do that. It's, that's the last thing I ever want to do. But, um, there are some things that you addressed tonight in the public speaking that they're, they're done. Alderman Wrestler, Wrestler brought them up, and there's really nothing we can do, um, there's really nothing we can do on a few of those items. We don't have any recourse on those. So it's, everything's not open. It's not an open option. So again, I, as Alderman Wrestler said, this is, if you think anyone up here takes any of this lightly, you are mistaken. We don't take any of the issues we decide on lightly. So we are looking to put it all the information together, get the questions answered, and that's all I can say for tonight, speaking for myself.
Thank you. Any other counsel?
Mayor? Can I, Mr. Dunkey, can I ask you a question? Um, I, I know Tom Adams is no longer the city attorney here, but he's, um, a wealth of knowledge when this subdivision was coming into fruition. Um, he, uh, in these Exhibit Fs, um, it, um, you know, letters from Tom Adams directly to Mayor Schneider at the time, um, is very.
Which date is that on, sir?
It is, um, the October 16th, 20, or 2002. Um, I have a copy here. It's very, he, he goes into detail of obviously what, um, is expected of Ruck Road at, um, going in the future. Um, I've heard a couple of people this evening referenced that letter, and I was just seeing if, what's your interpretation of that would be? Or have you even talked, I, I guess you probably haven't talked to Tom Adams, but what, um, I mean, it's very clear that he's saying what the future intention of that.
Yeah, actually, no. And the reason, let me explain why. Um, because, first off, I don't know what this regional plan is. There's nothing anywhere that says a regional development plan for the area. I, we can find no documentation of anything that's been referenced to calling a regional development plan. So I, I, we can't say what that's referencing. So there is that. Um, but if you can read it, so the first, uh, I'll go down to the middle of the paragraph that starts additionally. Okay? "The developer of Brellinger subdivision is willing to dedicate a 32 and a half foot right-of-way along the south and east boundaries." Okay, so the south boundary is the one shared with Briar Lakes. The east boundary is shared with Bluff Ridge. They dedicated 32 and a half feet? There's no, uh, issue with that, uh, no disputing or anything there. However, uh, continue reading. Of that, uh, duh, 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 uh, "They're willing to dedicate to the city a 32 and a half foot right-of-way along the south and east boundaries of that subdivision for road right-of-way, utilities, and drainage. And the developer of Briar Lakes Estates subdivision is willing to dedicate to the city a 32-foot, uh, 32 and a half foot right-of-way along the north boundary of that subdivision." Now the language changes. "For road right-of-way utilities, uh, and drainage for future widening and reconstruction of the currently existing Ruck Road where the 90-degree curves now exist, in order to keep that road, road open for the use of adjoining owners and for future development of areas located west and north, neither of which would be Bluff Ridge." Scott?
Sorry about, so the, um, so the language that I'm referring to, so 32 and a half feet along the south and east of the subdivision, uh, "to provide for road right-of-way utilities and drainage for future widening and reconstruction of the currently 90 degrees for future." And then there's also then, "for the development areas located west and north."
Do you have this?
Of the section that was east and south. Bluff Ridge is not west and north of Brellinger. "That section of roadway to be reconstructed and improved in the future when those areas developed by whoever develops those acres."
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm.
I, I'm saying he, he, okay, let me explain.
I'll step up. And I just lost all of it.
I'm, I'm just.
The east-west section in between Briar Lakes and Brellinger, east-west. North of there is Brellinger, south of there is Briar Lakes. This section of Ruck Road that goes to Ruck Parkway, east of it is Bluff Ridge. West of it is Brellinger. North and west of this is not Bluff Ridge. North and west of there is Walnut Ridge is.
The Walnucker property.
Yes. That does not referring to the property for the reconstruction.
Briar Lakes is already developed and widened the road.
Okay.
All the way up there. Yeah, so they, it was dedicated, but it specifically says, "for the properties north and west of Ruck Road," n-not east of Ruck Road.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have, do we have that document? He's got.
It was emailed.
Mayor?
For that.
Mayor, since this is an evaluation, can you send us a comment very briefly on it?
Yep.
This is a question. He's referring to.
Tom Adams was referring to the Rick Road section from Quarry Road up to Rick Parkway when he said north and west. This was all integrated here about that improvement of that road also. Of the, from Quarry Road up to Brellinger, uh, Rick Parkway. So when he's saying north and west, west would be Walnut Ridge.
Right.
Uh, north would be Brellinger and this here property.
Right.
So we're talking about two different things in this letter. The Rick Road going up to Brick Parkway and then the continuing of Rick Road.
Okay. Mayor, let me, let me clarify something too. I'm not saying staff's determination is correct. I'm just explaining the reason why we gave the advice and the direction that we did and what it was based upon, be clear. Um, this is our best guess at, at what was meant by these things when there is no supplemental commentary to give.
Yep. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the council? Okay, all right. We're going to move on. And, uh, I just want to be clear too, you know, when this subdivision came in, you know, I, I'm with the city engineer, talk to him almost daily with regards to watershed. Um, you know, I've lived here my whole life. It's always been a problem with the watershed along the Palmer Creek, um, under the Route 3, um, overpass. You know, I can remember as a kid that flooding constantly. Um, you know, you just had homes and, and things, although they say it's not supposed to, uh, contribute, but, um, you know, I, I've addressed with city engineer, whatever we can do as a city to address future watershed, whether it's a, a large retention lake somewhere, um, we're, we're gonna do that. So, um, and as far as the roadways, things like that, we're, we're doing the roundabout, possibly doing another one maybe in the future. So, um, we hear your concerns, comments. Like Mary Ellen and Mr. Wrestler said, that, uh, you know, this was annexed in way back when, and, and unfortunately, you know, you can't go back on the annexa- annexation agreement that was in place at that time. So, you know, we do hear your concerns. We will address, you know, what we can as a city, um, but as they mentioned, the legal aspects, if, if it's, uh, um, denied as presented, um, you know, there's legal ramifications for the city as a whole, so, um... They can buzz me, that's fine. So, uh, you know, we do hear your comments, concerns. We're doing everything we can as a city to address, you know, those issues that we can. And, uh, like I said, I talk to the city engineer almost daily as far as the, the water issues along Palmer Creek, so, all right. We're gonna move forward. Thank you guys for coming out.
I have a question for Chuck.
Yeah, yes.
Um, my question is, where do we go from here? There's been a ton of documentation that has been discovered since the Planning Commission had their meeting and here, well, there's been voluminous new documents come up. Does this go back to the Planning Commission now that all these new documents have come up for reevaluation? And if not, why not?
We're approving the preliminary plat. That's what it is, as presented. Um, those documents, um, there's nothing really we can do as far as a city to, um, change the annexation agreement or the subdivision.
The annexation agreement has a life of 20 years and it's, it's come and gone. The R3 zoning was done a long time ago, that's, that's already here. And the bulk of the questions and concerns tonight are just premature, because they come about, they come about at, as Marsh Mallory stated, at the next phase where most of the questions are heard, and that's when they come up. It just, they're just not incorporated at this initial preliminary plat stage. At the next stage, if this body approves it, sends to the next stage, that's where all that information's come together on the water and all these issues you're talking about. That, that's the appropriate time to be addressing it, and the staff will. If it gets that far, that's when they'll be addressing those issues.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to Section F. I want to just take every, uh, thank Tom Smith, uh, the mayor of Waterloo for the, in the city of Waterloo for the use of their boom truck. Um, unfortunately, ours, um, um, broke down when we were installing the Christmas lights, so I appreciate Mr. Tom Smith, the mayor of Waterloo's, um, and the city's use of their boom truck. Next thing is, uh, I want to comment on the, um, Public Works Department. They are doing an excellent job with the leaf pickup.
Yes, they are.
And, um, with all the Christmas decorations, so I want to just thank them for the job that they're doing. And, uh, the next item is the Christmas parade. We had a large turnout, which was, uh, I believe, very successful for everybody and enjoyed, uh, the Christmas parade. So thank everybody for participating and coming out. So, all right. Any other comments from the aldermen? We'll move on to the consent agenda. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
There are seven items on the consent agenda tonight. The first is a motion to approve minutes of the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular city council meeting. The second item is a motion to approve closed session minutes of the November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one regular city council meeting. The third item is a motion to approve payment of vouchers for the period of November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one through December second, two thousand twenty-one in the amount of eight hundred and nine thousand four hundred and twenty-three, spot three oh. The fourth item is a motion to approve statement of funds for October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The fifth item is a motion to approve city treasurer's annual report for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. The sixth item is a motion to approve special event permit for Monroe County on ice, which is going to be held February twelfth, two thousand twenty-two. And the seventh and last item is ordinance number three five nine one, providing an appointment of a replacement member to the park and recreation advisory board, and that would be Matthew Klotmeyer.
Any items that the aldermen wish to pull from the consent agenda as read? No. Can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda as read? Alderman Martins, Alderman Riddle, roll call.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook. Holcamp.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Yes.
Garmer. Corey. Yes.
Thank you. Next item is unfinished business. This is a motion to award Meadow Park pickleball court project to McConnell and Associates in the amount of twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. Mr. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. As my agenda report item had stated, on November twenty-third, we took bids for, to convert tennis courts at Meadow Park for pickleball courts. We did receive one bid. The bid was from McConnell Associates for twenty-five hundred. McConnell and Associates had just completed the pickleball courts in Waterloo this past year. And as far as anything that we've had done with our tennis courts as far back as what Tim Erns can think, they've been doing stuff here for the last eight-plus years. So, if there's any questions?
And just so everybody knows, we've been notified of an outside entity that intends to cover this expense that pending approval by the board of directors there. So, yes, Alderman.
They got to put the artificial surface on, they got to seal the cracks, they got to do new...
No, they're not going to put the artificial. They're going to seal cracks and do it like the regular tennis courts, not the infamous surface that was on the one tennis courts.
Keep the basketball court?
Yep.
Yeah.
And this will be four, four pickleball courts, four of them, yes. Yeah. Can we get a motion to approve Alderman Niemitz, Alderman Corey, roll call.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
Yes.
Holcamp.
Yes.
He said yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Yes.
Next item is a motion to approve preliminary engineering agreement with Gonzalez Companies LLC for the Gent Road reconstruction Phase One project. Mr. Smith.
Yeah, we've received, you know, an STP grant to do improvements on Gent Road. We need to get going on the engineering on Phase One, which Phase One would be doing some improvements from the bridge at Palmer Creek to Christina Court. The proposal's for ninety-eight thousand one sixty-two. Funding for this will be motor fuel tax, more specifically will be our Rebuild Illinois money, which we got part of the new capital plan, and we have to obligate some of this money by, I think, twenty-twenty-five. An agreement with the contract is enclosed for your consideration.
And can you expand on what that all improvement will be?
Yeah, the initial goal is, I mean, Gent Road is old Route Three, which used to be actually only eighteen-foot wide pavement, the oh-nine-six-nine concrete pavement. It was widened to twenty-foot wide, you know, many years ago, resurfaced and given over to the city. The proposal will be, since this is a minor, I believe it's a minor collector or major collector, it'll be widened to at least thirty-foot face-to-face where it can. Now, there is a big bluff by our pump station, so how that's going to work is going to yet to be determined, but it'd be widened, curb and gutter, asphalted sidewalk, at least on one side, maybe prep the other side for future sidewalk. This phase is only to Christina Court. I think the goal, we have funding for Christina Court to Main Street. When we get into that part of the design, we'll try to realign the intersection there at Main and Gent because it's on a super, it's skewed, it's a difficult... The goal might be try to do it to Wedgewood if possible, be determined, but that's kind of the initial goal of that.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the preliminary engineering agreement with Gonzalez, Inc., for the Gent Road reconstruction Phase One? Alderman Martins, roll call.
Niemitz.
Abstain.
Yes.
Hook. Holcamp.
Yes.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Yes.
Next item is J three, resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-seven for improvement under the Illinois Highway Code. This is the Gent Road reconstruction Phase One project.
And this is basically passing a resolution to assign the motor fuel tax to a certain section number associated with the project. It's kind of an accounting tool.
Can we get a motion? Mr. Riddle, Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Roll call.
Niemitz.
Can I ask a question in the middle of this?
Yeah.
For the attorney? I abstained on the last one because my husband occasionally consults with that company.
I knew the answer to that question.
And I wanted to disclose that for sure in an open meeting. On this one, is there any, is there any relevance to that same that I cannot, that I cannot vote in favor of?
How much involved... Where's Chris? How much involvement is Gonzalez on this one?
They're just overpaying.
To the prime? Does he have any... Well, it's always safer to abstain.
Yeah.
He has no, no involvement in this whatsoever.
But just for sake of appearance, I abstained if I were you.
I shall abstain. I apologize for the interruption.
That's okay.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
Yes.
Holcamp.
Yes.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Yes.
Next item is J four, resolution number twenty-two-one dash twenty-eight, to levy a tax of point zero-two percent of the value of the taxable property in the city of Columbia, Illinois for the Columbia Public Library building and equipment purposes for the fiscal year of the city commencing May first, two thousand twenty-one, and ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Brim?
Mayor, thank you, sir. The Local Library Act authorizes municipalities in the state of Illinois to levy an additional tax above and beyond the point one-five authorized by state statute to the value of two-hundredths of one percent on taxable property in cities. As you noted, it is specifically used for buildings and equipment purposes. And although the amount of two-hundredths of one percent is authorized by statute, the amount that's proposed later this evening in the actual property tax levy for the city of Columbia is zero-point-zero-one-five percent. This is something that is done on an annual basis by the city, following state statute. A notification, our public notice, excuse me, will be published in the Republic Times next week notifying the public this was authorized by the city council. The public then has a set period of time to file a petition where this could wind up in the June general primary election for a referendum.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion to approve? Anyone? Alderman Niemitz? Alderman Martins, roll call.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
Yes.
Holcamp.
Yes.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Yes.
Next item is J five, ordinance number thirty-five ninety-two, abating certain taxes of the city of Columbia, Monroe and Sinclair Counties, Illinois. This will be general obligation bond, series twenty-fifteen. Mr. Brim?
Mayor, in twenty-fifteen, the city of Columbia issued a number of bonds pledged in full faith and collateral of the city of Columbia. The utility tax receipts that were received were pledged to serve as the payment source for that debt service. Should the utility tax receipts not be sufficient to meet the required debt service, the city then is obligated to levy a tax to ensure that that debt service is satisfied. We have determined the utility tax receipts forecast to be received in two thousand twenty-two are sufficient to meet this debt service obligation. Therefore, it is our recommendation that we abate the tax related to that two thousand fifteen GO bonds.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Can we get a motion? Alderman Martins, Alderman Hook, roll call.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
Yes.
Holcamp.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Yes.
Next item is J six, ordinance number thirty-five ninety-three, abating certain taxes of the city of Columbia, Monroe and Sinclair Counties, Illinois, general obligation bond, series twenty-twenty. Mr. Brim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In two thousand twenty, the city of Columbia issued nine hundred thousand dollars in general obligation bonds with video gaming receipts pledged to serve as the payment source for the debt service. These bonds were issued for the development of Creekside Park. That project is ongoing. We have determined that video gaming receipts estimated to be received in two thousand twenty-two will be sufficient to meet the debt obligation. Therefore, we would recommend that we abate the tax on this particular set of bonds, sir.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion for ordinance number thirty-five ninety-three? Alderman Niemitz, Alderman Martins, seconds, roll call.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
Yes.
Holcamp.
Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Yes.
Next item is J seven, this is ordinance number thirty-five ninety-four, levying the taxes for the fiscal year ending April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Brim, again.
Thank you, sir. As noted at the last city council meeting, we are fortunate that the Admiral Parkway Tiff District has successfully concluded. Coupled with the typical increase in EAV projected for the city, whenever you factor in the ten million plus dollars from Admiral Parkway, that Tiff District, we are projecting at least an eight-point-three-six percent increase in the city's EAV. What this means, it gives us a significant opportunity to reduce the property tax burden across properties in the city. We are projecting after the final EAV is calculated, we are estimating this decrease will result in the city's portion, the city's portion only of the property taxes collected by the county to decrease anywhere from four to six percent. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to note that over the past seven years, the city of Columbia has, on average, annually reduced its property taxes by one-point-two-seven percent, while for the past seven years, other taxing districts impacting city property owners have actually increased their levies by an average of three-point-five-six percent annually. On behalf of the mayor and the city council, at least at the staff level, I can say firmly that we remain committed to continuing this path of responsible fiscal stewardship.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Got a motion to approve ordinance number thirty-five ninety-four? Alderman Martins, Alderman Riddle, roll call.
Niemitz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
Yes.
Holcamp.
Yes. Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Yes.
Next item is, excuse me, J eight, ordinance number thirty-five ninety-five, it's approving a sign variance request for a sign located at two hundred Admiral Trosse Drive. This is the BJC Medical Group.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to clarify one point after answering a few questions about this case. One point, Mr. Alderman Garmer asked me to clarify for everyone in case anybody else misunderstood. The portion of the sign that's twelve-by-eighteen, which is, you know, the signed structure, that is not illegal. That is, complies with the sign code. That is not part of the request, okay? That is not up for variance. That would be allowed under normal circumstances. The variance applies to the fact that the sign portion of this, that's actually regulated is seventy-two square feet, which then puts the total sign area for the property in excess of the hundred-foot maximum, okay? So, it's just that sign area of the panels inside that twelve-by-eighteen structure. That's the part that's being varied. And the fact that this would allow an extra Route Three sign on Route Three frontage, which would not otherwise be allowed. You're only allowed one per establishment. So, those are the two subjects of this variance. Alderman Garmer was, had a misunderstanding about the twelve-by-eighteen and thought that was part of the approval. So, I just wanted to make sure that nobody else had that misperception, so.
So, the two signs, that one is on the building? And then the other one's going to be on the sign?
No, they have ones on the building already.
Right.
Were they not there, this sign would have just been approved.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Just the fact that they had them on the building and now they're going to have a freestanding sign, that's the thing that's duplicating.
Correct.
Okay.
The number of signs then in this case, plus the square footage total.
And I did look because I was curious about the visibility and that there, the trees are gone there, so you can't actually see. I was curious because of them trees along that creek there. I thought putting a sign up is going to be buried in the trees, but it actually is not. It's actually going to be visible. And it doesn't contain LED, does it?
It does not. This is just a plain old sign panel, no electronic LED sign.
Thanks.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Go ahead. I guess I probably won't support this. It has signage on the front and the back, it's illuminated, there are no trees blocking it. If we go ahead with this one, I could see other businesses asking the same thing, and I don't know... I just don't see, I've gone past there many times, I've taken photos. I don't see that this is, this is a detriment because it's very plain to me, this medical building is marked, as is Mercy and other facilities we have in town. And if we do this, I believe the dental office and the orthodontic office and many others could do the same thing. It was cited in the analysis about the Harris sign, and if I had to go back and look at that more closely, realizing that the size of that illumination, and I know this is not illuminated, but the size of that sign heading south is very distracting. I know it was an existing base, but I, it's too, to me, it's too intrusive, and it's not what we have characteristic of Columbia, and I will not be voting for the variance on this one. And I know I came up and you were very kind to explain things to me, but I, they have the two, they have the two, both streets, they're posted, and I don't see the reason for the third without letting many others do the same thing, and I think then we have a clutter.
Okay. Thank you.
He's the applicant, by the way.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead and step to the podium and then state your name and...
So, I'm Junior Frinzo, I own the BJC building, and after talking to BJC, they plan on being a longtime player here. And to them, getting their word out who they are and where they're at is very important to them. They came to me with this wanting it. The other option is they want to put a big thing on the back of the building, which I think would look awful. They want to put a big circular thing like the bank next door, the bank to the right of it, I guess, if you're looking from Route Three. They put that big oval thing on the back of the building and they're going to put a sign on that. The sign that I'm proposing is actually a really good-looking sign. It's one built in Smithon, and I'm sure you've seen a picture of it.
Yes, we have.
And just so you know, I built the orthodontist's office next door, and I built the dentist's office.
Very nice.
And yes, they do want someday to put signs out on theirs too. So, you're right in what you asked for. Jody Hensler actually asked me about it the other day, and I told her, well, you know, I have to talk to you guys because this all comes down to you anyway. But I think the sign's attractive. Most of it, like I said, is brick. But I think the sign's attractive, most of it, like I said, is brick, except for that small square of that area that has it. And it's so far off the road, if you've seen where it is compared to the road, it really don't look big at all when you look at it from, you look at it from, it's pretty far off the road. So I gotta say, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion? Mr. Wrestler? For a second.
To approve? Prove? Deny?
Yes, to approve. Mr. Martins? Second. Roll call.
Neamitz.
No.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
No.
Hole Camp.
Yes. Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey.
No.
What do we have?
Four. Four yeses. Four yeses, three no's.
Because it's an ordinance, you need five yeses. So the mayor would have to vote, aren't supposed to be valid?
Any new business? Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant to five ILCS twenty-two C one, appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body.
Thank you, James.
Can we get a motion for closed session? Alderman Martins? Alderman Neamitz? Roll call.
Neamitz.
Yes.
Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook. Hole Camp.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes.
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey.
Yes.
Here. Wrestler.
Yes.
Hook.
Here.
Hook.
Here.
Hole Camp.
Present.
Did he go?
Here, present.
He said yes.
No, I'm here!
Martins.
Yes.
Riddle.
Yes.
Garmer.
Corey. Here.
Any announcements? Any...
Here.
Any announcements anyone wishes to make? I'll entertain a motion now. Yes.
I'm sorry.
Alderman Neimitz?
Is there a way though, and I know Scott's not here, Doug, is there a way that, there were a lot of questions brought up tonight. Would it be appropriate to have some of the questions presented and then an answer, a staff answer to them?
I went through and I was scribbling, Mary Ellen, quite a few notes. I'll get with Andrew as well and we can just make sure that we have everything covered. I'd be happy to try to work on a Q and A. But you know, as we-
And instead of everybody shooting us-
And something else, I was going to talk with Mr. Bruckard about this tomorrow. You know, there were several valid points that were brought up by Mr. Wrestler and yourself this evening regarding statutory requirements with regards to development. It would probably be beneficial if we could do a similar kind of Cliffs Notes, if you will.
We can do like a bullet points. What do you do at the preliminary plat stage? What do you do with the development stage?
Oh, perfect.
Yes.
And lay it out. I tried a little bit, Marcus did a little bit in point.
She did very well.
Lay it out. Here's what we can do. Here's what we can't do at this stage. Here what we can do, here what we can't do at this stage.
Well, and not only that, but I think it would also be beneficial, you know, the comment was made that, I think Mark, I think he raised this point, sir. The fact that because the property was annexed in with an R three overlay, the city cannot just unilaterally go through the process and change that. Obviously, you know, a developer, a property owner inherently has certain rights to use their property. And you know, it's Scott's contention, it's staff's contention that the property as presented thus far, at least preliminarily, appears to conform with the applicable code. Now granted, I do think that yes, we can go through and do a Q and A, if you will, on some of the questions that were raised by some of the attendees this evening. We'd be happy to work on that. And we'll try to get that out to you as soon as possible because I understand, you know, if I were in your position, Mary Ellen, that's a lot of information, plus, you know, the supplements that were added to that to kind of digest and have the opportunity to make a decision. That's why we do need to be cognizant of the statutory 30 day timeline, but in light of the developer presenting additional information, staff finding additional information, and then other concerned parties presenting information pertaining to their perspective. Talking with Terry, we thought we would have a good argument should there be any kind of issues brought up that, you know, we're playing fast and loose with our deadline. You know, we're obviously still going through the detailed information, but you know, at some point, we do need to at least give a yay or nay to the preliminary plat.
I think it is a good idea also if we could put that on the website as far as-
Can we do that?
The process of the plaits.
Yeah.
What that looks like because people are concerned, they didn't know it. And to be honest, I didn't know prior to going into this role. So I think it's very informative if we can put as much out there as we can as far as the processes and things, how that works.
General development guidelines and the process for subdivisions.
I mean, it's up to the owner to, if they want to change the R three to R two, it'd be the owners.
Yeah.
Correct.
We can't do anything.
You would have-
They didn't understand that out there.
Yeah, sometimes communities can do it. If you do a whole town approach, you do your whole city, you go through this massive six month, eight month process. You know, it's very difficult. You can still easily be challenged, but that's the face, that's a problem you would face trying to change this R three to an R two because you'd be selectively doing it and you'd have it, my friend shut up your derriere. Because you can't just pick out one area. You'd have to do the town as a whole as part of a whole revised comprehensive plan. You know, that would take a year to do all that. So no, the public has to know that, no, we can't just arbitrarily switch it to R three to R two because the jolly neighbors want us to.
And it was there before Brellinger even got nominated. It was still down there before. When there's subdivisions, they do, if they look at, if they were to look at this, they would see that R two was there.
At the time it was done, the Durn was the top type of subdivision. They were R three. So it makes sense that they went to R three. And it also makes sense that Country Crossing, which came into play, they were R three, but he upgraded that himself to make larger lots, larger homes. And now the adjacent property, which is also R three, comes in at the specs and they don't like that. And Country Crossing, they didn't like that, but it's like-
They shot themselves in the foot.
Well, yeah, I mean, if the guy wouldn't went bankrupt, he wouldn't have a problem with that, but. I don't care. I don't care. That's where it was. But of course, things I want to, when you're putting out that Q and A, can you address the slope? Problem, no problem. And if going forward, if we approve a preliminary plat and we decide later that the slope is an issue, if there can be anything done. And then drainage, I know that if they're going to come in with an engineering hydrologist that says the drainage is going to be no greater than what it was before, that's what we've been going on. People don't buy that. But and then as far as the elbow, if under the current development things and the easements that they got, if that elbow or those elbows and the easements we got aren't going to be sufficient to develop that because of the curvature. We can't do that on a modern street. Address why that won't work. And also if that 40 acres comes in at the corner of the elbow.
Yeah.
And you want to go ahead and develop that, could we make, if we had retained without abandoning that road, could we make that come straight out onto Rick Road? They developed that piece all the way down to the existing Rick Road. That would be a, that would be a potential development on that going down there. And if you would go ahead and, if the guy's going to do 50% of whatever the road was, if we went ahead and came out of his subdivision and went to the left down towards the elbow, how far would that actually get us? So if we had that piece developed, not all the way to the elbow, but part of it developed to current specs, the new development, if it comes in at the 40 acres at 20 years, goes ahead and has to develop the rest of that elbow coming out. And then they can coin whether we put it in there or we find a grant or something like that. But that, the, just addressing, because people want to talk about what's all involved in that. And it just isn't as simple as saying, yeah, we'll fix up the road. One, you don't even have the land to do that right now. That easement is not going to fix that road that we currently have. We'd have to find other property on the sides of the road to change the engineering on it.
Something that I do just want to not remind the council of, but just make the council aware. You'll recall, you know, for those of you in the prior term with Country Crossing Phase Two, and then as well as the first iteration of Bluff Ridge Estates. Anytime that you have, and even I would even back up to Brellinger with how that process unfolded, you know, the different considerations that were given. Anytime that you have an annexation involved or some sort of a special consideration, that is the time where you're able to get in. It depends on the hamburger, so to speak, with regards to massaging certain things, making sure that, you know, certain ideas, certain issues are addressed. You know, we have a lot more, I should say significantly more control over those situations where the developer is asking for something in exchange for, you know, a special consideration or something of that nature. We saw it with Country Crossing Phase Two. It was with one, and it was submitted just as a straight R three development. We also saw that with Bluff Estates. That was originally going to be an annexation agreement that would encompass, you know, the remaining property that Wild Oak LLC owns. That after there was some pushback, some questioning that was brought up, that was withdrawn and you see what's been submitted for your consideration, which is essentially a straight R three development. You know, Scott, I feel Mr. Donicki has made it clear on several occasions, there are no variances are being requested from the developer in this particular case. But we have essentially lost the ability to negotiate certain terms, certain aspects that might be considered up and beyond what is required by the subdivision code or the R three zoning because it was withdrawn and resubmitted as a straight R three development. So with that said, I know that we're all here to serve the residents of the city of Columbia, and that's certainly something that we don't take lightly. But I do think that, and this is a reflection more on staff than certainly the council, we do need to do a better job of communicating, well, yes, this may not be the ideal approach. However, because we're looking at an annexation, we are now able to require X, Y, Z, which is above and beyond the code versus, hey, it's just a straight development. Our only job is to review whether it conforms with the adopted codes and make a recommendation based off of that. So just going forward, you know, if there is a situation where, you know, you're talking a CUP, Community Unit of Plan, you're talking an annexation agreement, you know, that's really the kind of time where we have the flexibility, if you will. I think that's something that I can also amend onto whatever document that we prepare, just to kind of make that understanding a little bit clearer for the other residents.
If I can add to it, the problem is that Columbia, like most communities in Illinois are non-home rule. That's why the annexation agreement is the only real, as Doug was saying, it's the only real power tool you have that you can stick and use, and it's good for 20 years. You cannot just up and extend them. There's a trick to doing it, but it's very difficult to do and you don't count on. So you got your 20 year window and you have to, you have to get it done and get handled that way. That's why the citizens should, have to be careful getting upset when you're trying to negotiate a deal with an annexation agreement and just say no, because often the alternative is something that is even less appeal, you know, desirable for them. And you're seeing it, so.
In your question, what got me here was some of these people were saying, oh, there's glaring things wrong with this. There's glaring, there's glaring. It's like, it's like, what? It's like, you know, what were they referring to specifically? Is it that, oh, you cannot manage the water? The steepness of the, of their drive, of the roads? You know, what specific, because if it's owned R three, and if they meet the grade, like it can be as steep as Cemetery Hill, then we don't have the ability to make them wind the road. If we have no recourse on stormwater, other than when it gets to Mr. Good's property and it spills out there, it's got to be no greater and not flood the road than what it was before. That if you put that into those explanations, that this is what we can control and due to the lapse in annexation, we cannot control this, but this is what Illinois law says and what we have to assume they have to follow. If they don't follow it and Mr. Good gets flooded, he can sue them. That would be his recourse.
And we would likely be named a party in that as well for having approved the development.
But addressing what they, what they said and actually getting them something that we are considering their questions in that, I don't mind telling people we don't want to hear, but I don't like making a decision on something that I can't defend. And it's like-
Understand.
You know, the one that, the one for me to, that's the easiest to go ahead and defend and just, you know, go away with that is that the road through there. And it's like, Terry, as far as being locked in, they might have talked about originally having an elbow 30 years ago in that road. But due to time and development and change in construction, are we ever bound by whatever it was I addressed at that? Mr. Adams had said this was the mindset at the time, but now, you know what, that road through there, that really serves a purpose.
What we have to remember, things, what you think about 20 years ago, changes over time. You know, that's the thing they keep hammering about this plan. Yeah, plans are just that. They're a plan, then your code is the law. And you follow that plan until you start seeing changes in technology, changes in circumstance, and you realize, okay, that plan isn't quite as applicable now as it was back when we approved it. We're going to go this direction for the following reasons. And that's what happens over time. And as, you know, you change, people change or when something doesn't get followed up on documentation, you then forget exactly what did happen and why it happened.
But you have the flexibility to operate on the idea that this is the best course of action. And if that road, coming into that section, and they're talking about connector roads and feeder roads, and they're talking about coming in there. If you address, I don't even know if that has any substance to it or not, it just seems logical that if you come straight into there on the other side and you're having the people come across, that seems like a natural artery.
Yeah, if I could just, I just wanted to follow up. The last thing I was going to say to you, I dot standards is some of the biggest, because they're constantly changing and we almost always have to follow the I dot standards. So what you could have done 30 years ago, I guarantee some things you can't do now.
And then the arguments about that I'm having trouble with you guys or not, that's like, they, they developed two sections down here on the left in Brellinger. So they're driving through there with concrete trucks, dump trucks and everything else for the last, I don't know, many years, 10 years and that. Now, when they put the little section in and it connected up to Rick Road, they said, oh, that's to feed the golf course. Yeah, the golf course that was supposed to get a back entrance home was supposed to develop subdivision out the back of there. That was going to be a lot of, a lot of houses out there. So we don't want the houses coming in on the other side of the road, just on our side of the road. That kind of illogical argument there is something that, I don't know if they don't think it through, but it's like, you're just really looking for a certain place on those houses to go to, not the other side of the road. And, and that's the part that I hang up on. It's like going through that RE versus the elbow. And I don't mind making them put in an elbow, but we ain't got the property to do that. We don't have the ledge on that. But if you can find a solution that we can put the new development to finish the road, we keep the property, finish it, put part of the way down there and fix it later on. That's not going to go ahead and make it a usable thing because common sense is they're going to drive right through that subdivision. They're not going to use that elbow or, you know, until it's actually improved with better dimensions.
And to follow up to a question that you kind of raised earlier, Mark, with regards to being bound by previous councils, previous plans, previous ideas. It was brought up this evening. Mayor Hill brought it up throughout the campaign. It's something that we're doing right now, the comprehensive plan. That was something that was adopted back in 2005. It's grossly, grossly outdated. Furthermore, whenever you look at our comprehensive plan, that's the 2005, whenever I say our comprehensive plan, the 2005 plan compared to other comprehensive plans, it is not a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is supposed to be a roadmap for how the community, how the council visions the city developing over a course of 20, 20 years. This was more, you need to deal with the car's topography, give special consideration to this area. It really wasn't a comprehensive plan in the sense that a comprehensive plan is supposed to be, like I said, the development plan for the municipality. A comprehensive plan is then implemented through an adoption of a zoning code that complements and enforces the comp plan. From there, you look at the subdivision code. It's kind of a, you know, it sets the course for everything. Unfortunately, that did not take place here. Now, I'm not sure why or anything. I'm not, you know, casting any aspersions on anybody that was involved in that process by any stretch of the imagination. It was, you know, the best information that they were presented at the time that they felt was appropriate for the city. I respect that.
... in certain areas where the attorney there, when I had it, Mark Scott, had said, you've got to fix, or fix Rick Road. You said you have to fix Rick Road in your, in your plan. It's like, that plan is outdated. It's there. And you know what? They did fix Rick Road all the way from Quarry Road down to the new road. We're not maybe going to fix the last piece of it, but, and they put the other elbow in there going through the sub. So it's not like you didn't fix the whole thing. They followed the guideline. The idea was, yeah, you're going to put houses out there. You're going to fix that road. And they made Briar Lake and Brellinger fix that road. But it may not be perfect, but you try to find the best solution for it. But to say that, oh, you've got to fix that road, it's there. Some roads become outdated. There's all kinds of bluff sections, the bluff road that have been abandoned because we went ahead and put new piece in.
And you know, Mr. Donicki, he's not here right now, but I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to plug the comprehensive process. For all of the residents that were here in attendance this evening, as well as any resident that watched it at home or any body that has a business or other interest in Columbia, I would definitely encourage them to take the opportunity to participate in that process and go to columbiaconversations.com, register. There's a quick two section survey that's up there right now, but really it's kind of just the start. There are going to be several opportunities for residents to engage in the process and make their voices heard for how, what is their vision of Columbia.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good plug. That's a good plug there. All right.
It's going to get the big bucks.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments?
No, sir.
It's time I entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Riddle? Mr. Cory? Roll call.
Neimitz?
Yes.
Wrestler?
Yes.
Hook? Full camp?
Yes.
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 Martins? Riddle?
Yes.
Garmer?